Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, March 5th, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website and for guest speakers joining us, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is rule call. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith. Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Drossberger, Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak and our first registered speaker is Amy Zace.
Hello, good morning. Thank you. My name's Amy Zace. I live in the Beechwood, Beechview, excuse me, neighborhood. I'm here to speak as a member of two different groups actually. One is Bike Pittsburgh and one is Pittsburgh Walks. I assume that you all are familiar with Bike Pittsburgh. They've been here for a while. But the latter, Pittsburgh Walks, we advocate for infrastructure programs, policies to improve safety, accessibility, and enjoyment for people who walk in the city of Pittsburgh, including people with disabilities. We envision walking infrastructure that is accessible, enjoyable throughout all of our 90 neighborhoods. We, both groups, are strongly in favor of ordinance 2025-1541, which amends the city code to permanently adopt the sidewalk and curb repair program to provide assistance to eligible property owners. Despite our famously steep terrain, Pittsburgh is uniquely a city that walks. About 11% of workers in Pittsburgh commute on foot, one of the highest rates in the U.S. Like many of my neighbors, I walk, e-bike, and take transit all over our city. Sidewalks that are in disrepair put me and my neighbors in danger. Pedestrian crashes make up approximately 30% of fatal crashes, even though they represent only 6% of total crashes. And nearly 90% of pedestrian crashes occurred within 500 feet of a transit stop. Disconnected and inaccessible sidewalks cut off vital access to people who rely on them for walking or rolling around. The sidewalk and curb repair program will ensure that all property owners have the ability and support they need to maintain their sidewalks. Thank you for supporting this program and for protecting this important infrastructure we all utilize. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Jeff Mulkern.
My name's Jeff Mulkern and I live in District 5, Squirrel Hill. And I'm also here to speak in support of the making permanent the program that provides support for refurbishing and replacing sidewalks for qualifying homeowners. My eyesight faded away 20 some years ago and when I retired, I wanted a community with sidewalks and they weren't going to put them in shelters so we walked most, many neighborhoods in Pittsburgh until we settled on Squirrel Hill. But I learned from my walks that not everybody has the best of sidewalks. Shifting slabs give me fits because they snag my canes, snag my feet, and I have to get reoriented before I step off, otherwise I end up tripping over garbage can lids or clipping concrete walls and getting stitches, which wasn't as painful as it sounds except for paying for the stitches. So yes, I would very much like to see quality sidewalks throughout the city. We've been here just over four years, going on for years. We're glad to be here, so thank you for the sidewalks. We have the luxury of picking where we would live. Not everybody has that luxury, so therefore, I did learn that sidewalks are public right away, but it's private property owners expected to maintain them and that puts a high price to pay for people who are limited resources. So I'm just pointing out once again that this program, made permanent, would provide a universal benefit to all residents that'll endure for decades, long after they rename the stadiums. So thank you all and please just give heed to this measure to support sidewalk refurbishment. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. Yesterday, we had the fellow that has the radio program in the wheelchair that spoke about what should be done about Salem's, the grocery store that's closing down. Well, first, I would like to say to him and everybody else that it really behooves me how someone from another neighborhood can come and tell us what we need to do in our neighborhood when you don't know the full truth. I don't know the full truth and I live there, but I started making a sign that says, "Tell us the truth." It is said that the people, his employees, was his downfall. They're saying, it's allegedly supposed to be pictures of the employees, his employees, his same race as him, taking out the food. We as Black people were only working part-time, no benefits. And then we go shopping, there's quite a few people told me, when the Black people, we go shopping, they follow us around the store. They should have been following their own employees from what they said. So I applaud you for speaking every week, like you said, you're on the radio, I mean, you speak on the TV. I applaud you for that. I even said, "Come down. We need to have more people come down so you can actually watch them while they're on the computers, on their phones, on their tablets, while we're talking." We only got three minutes. You know what Dr. Miller was telling me? Rachel Maddow, who has a, she's pretty good, she seems to be kind of open-minded, and they said that she gets paid for that hour, $183,000 for an hour. So Mr. Dr. Miller said, "Ms. Brown, you come down, you speak three minutes. She gets paid $3,000 a minute." So he said, "Ms. Brown, every time you speak, you're worth $9,000." I don't think you guys appreciate that, that I come down. I think really you don't appreciate, I sit here hours on hours and three minutes, they will not even put down their stuff. They talk to each other. Ms. Gross is the one that really, she prounces all around the table, whispering and talking. And Mr. Coghill, he doesn't understand when I say, said, "He's back here talking while we're talking." He says he wants to explain, "I'm back here taking care of business." But I want to know, why is that table up there? Why is nine people supposed to be up there and you're back here talking and we trying to speak and we only got three minutes and he comes, "I'm talking about the, speak about the devil." And he walks in the room. I speak about you because I think that as a businessman, because you own the business, you don't appreciate the little people. Because you own this business and you're going to think that you should be back here talking while we're talking. It's wrong. It's 100% wrong.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. And our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee. New Papers, Bill 1532.
Bill 1532, Resolution Amending Resolution 603 of 2024, authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Fisher Phillips LLP for legal services in connection with issues involving labor disputes by increasing the cost by $150,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $210,000 and adding one year for a new contract term of two years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1532, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1533.
Bill 1533, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Dicky McCamey and Chilcoe, PC, for Expert Legal Services in Connection with a Litigation Matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $54,082. 90 Cent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1533, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1534.
Bill 1534, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Comer Miller LLC for Expert Legal Services in Connection with a Litigation Matter in the U.S. District Court of the Western District of Pennsylvania, Amount Not to Exceed $35,109 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1534, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1535.
Bill 1535, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Summers, McDonald, Hoodock, Guthrie, and Rouch, PC, for Expert Legal Services in Connection with a Litigation Matter in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania, Amount Not to Exceed $41,590 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1535, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. 1536.
Bill 1536, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Major Cities Chiefs Association, Amount Not to Exceed $7,500 for Payment of Annual Member Deues.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1536, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1537.
1537, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the U.S. Marshal Service in an Amount Not to Exceed $8,900 to Return Seized Funds in accordance with the case filed in the United States District Court, Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1537, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1538.
Bill 1538, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms in an Amount Not to Exceed $9,220 to Return Seized Funds in accordance with the case filed in the United States District Court of Western District, Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1538, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1539.
Bill 1539, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the U.S. Marshal Service in an Amount Not to Exceed $6,428 to Return Seized Funds in accordance with the case filed in the United States District Court, Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1539, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Is there a motion on invoices?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P cards. Do I have a motion on P cards?
Motion to approve.
I have no notes on P cards this week. Any further discussion on P cards? Seeing none, all those in favor of P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? P cards are approved. That moves us to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Bill 1531, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into a Clinical Affiliation Agreement with Community College of Allegheny County to Enact a Percepting Program, Allowing Students to Learn Professional Skills from City Employees and the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services for Training and Educational Purposes at Zero Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1531, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1559.
Bill 1559, Resolution Authorizing an Extension of the Term of the Acting Chief of Police for 90 Additional Days Effective March 3rd, 2025.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Second.
Second with discussion, Councilman Coghill.
Okay, yeah, I'll just open it up. Obviously, I think we all heard the news that Chief Ragland, or Acting Chief Ragland is moving on, so I guess this is not necessary today, so.
Well, I'd like to talk about it.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kelsmith.
Thank you. I actually, what we want to put in place is that there's a structure for the process for the chief of police moving forward, no matter who the chief of police is. There's been a lot of conversation, a lot of accusations that were really unfairly labeled against council yesterday, so I'm going to talk about that for a second first, because I think the public needs to know. First of all, when you have a mayor's race, everything seems to be on the table. Everybody seems to talk about everything and there's a lot of mincing words and twisting words and everything else. I have said from the very beginning of this process that the Public Safety Department and public health should never be part of politics, even though it is. And the chief of police position is an appointee by an elected official to nine other elected officials. So there is politics involved, whether you want it to be or not to be, there are politics involved. Having said that, we had meetings with the chief and during that time, the meeting with the chief, what we discussed was ways that the bureau could be more united. And there's a lot of division, as we all know, or most of us who have been here for a long time know, there's a lot of division within the bureau. You either have one chief and they appoint the people that they work with, or you have another chief and they appoint the people they work with. We were trying to get to a place where there's so much, right now, we're at a critical moment where there are so many officers leaving. I believe in this July, this summer, in July, there's about 180-plus officers eligible for retirement, which means we will lose even further, we could lose further people if they're not pleased with the direction the bureau goes. We tried to get us to a place where we could put people that got along with this group, people got along with that group, the mayor got his appointee, the public had the public meetings that they wanted. Councilman Coghill tried very hard to get people to agree to three meetings instead of six meetings. So there was a lot of conversations during that time. I shared, and Councilwoman Rick, you called this commander and asked him if he was interested in being the chief, so I want to be clear about this. And I said at the time then, and I'm saying it again now, at that time, he does not want, he did not want to be an assistant chief, so there was no conversation about that from my end, I can assure you of that. All that was said was, there are a lot of officers that feel very disgruntled in the city of Pittsburgh and they were, I have never heard this many complaints about one chief. And it was coming from every level, from every bureau, from every department, I'm sorry, every zone, and every different division. And I think, and yet, at the same time, a lot of people were saying, "This is who we need right now." So there was, it was, we were, council was hearing a lot of conflicting reports. So trying to bring that together and trying to get us to a place where everybody had somebody that they could work with and officers felt respected, would stay with the bureau and not leave, leave the public protected, making sure that, you know, the laws were enforced, but yet, at the same time, the public had their voice heard and shared with some of the direction they liked to see. So we had all those conversations and all those meetings, and we had what I thought was a very productive meeting with the NAACP, Alliance for Police Accountability, BPEP, I remember all the groups that were in the room at the time, but we had a really productive meeting with them and they said it was not to do anything against the chief, it was not against the mayor. And I don't want to see the mayor, because I don't, I know a lot of people that during a political time and during a political season, people are going to use this to attack the mayor or to attack an opponent or whatever. I don't think that that's fair to anybody at this time, I really don't. I think that if you really want to keep public safety and you really want to keep people safe, it should be focused on who could do this job, how can we keep Pittsburghers safe, and how can we make officers feel valued and want to stay with the bureau so that Pittsburghers are safe and officers are safe on the streets. And so I actually resent this even being coming part of a political battle on either side, because I think public safety merits, you know, more respect from the city council and from any elected official and from people, you know, who are candidates. With that said, I will say that we had, I think we reached an agreement with the community on what they wanted, even though Councilman Coghill thought it should be less meetings. He did, he did get them to agree that it would be done, the process would be done by the end of March, using our zones, our zones, our safety councils. So there was a process in place. Then we went and we met with Chief Ragland, Councilman Coghill, Councilman Charlotte, and myself met with Chief Ragland, Acting, or Acting Chief Ragland, Assistant Chief Devine, the Public Safety Director. And during that meeting, we made a lot of comments about what we thought should happen. My only comment was, there are a lot of officers that feel very disrespected and feel very much attacked by what's happening. And it may be the way you talk to people and you, even though it may not be in your heart or in your mind, it's the way it's coming across. And so because there was so much of that feeling, we were said, could there be somebody who could talk more to the officer and deal with the officer part of it and yet, you know, somebody who could, you know, he could oversee all those efforts and the policies and things that needed to be done with the bureau? Is there a way we could get to a compromise here where everybody could work together and not lose any additional officers? With that said, nobody, in that meeting that I was in, nobody in that meeting said that they wanted an assistant chief. So on the way out, the command, the chief, one of the things people said to us is, "He'll drop a bomb and he'll do something." So I felt like he did that on the way out the door and made all these insinuations, and I'm just going to tell you, that was not part of the meeting I was in. I didn't hear anybody say that, say they want this person or that person specifically for a chief. What I did hear them say, and I know what I said, is, "I want you to be able to work with people." They feel very much attacked. And if you think this is political, I have lots of comments that can talk about this and how the politics that were involved in picking the chiefs over the past few chiefs. So if you really want to have this conversation, we'll have it, but we're going to have it very publicly. But I think this piece of legislation needs to put in the process in place that we told the community we would do. Those meetings, and I think we need to start, strike the part about extending the Acting That piece, I think that's what we have to do. So I'd like to hold this for one week till we get that, those amendments in place.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilperson Sharland.
Yeah, I very much agree with Councilwoman Kelsmith's comments there and her recollection of the event. It is really a shame that we are not going to move forward with Chief Ragland. I had been on the community meeting circuit, making sure that everyone was aware that the chief would be coming to his own three public safety meeting. I was very concerned with how the chief was going to interact with the public. I thought that was very important. And if our doing that somehow made the chief walk away, then maybe he wasn't the right person for the job if he wasn't willing to meet with the community, go to the regular zone public safety councils, which I believe that a chief should be doing with somewhat frequency anyway. So knowing that, that if that is the thing that scared him away, then I don't think this was the right person or the right role. Maybe he should have stayed in his assistant chief role to begin with. I do want to say that, you know, hearing some of the remarks that have been made in the media yesterday about how council behaved here, which, you know, I was in those meetings, there were multiple witnesses in those meetings, everything was, you know, all about concern to make sure that the community's process was heard and the council could make the most informed decision here. If, if the mayor wants to claim that there was, you know, an ethical dilemma in what happened here, I encourage him, put your money where your mouth is and put an ethics complaint in. There, you know, I, I think all members that were involved would be welcome to see that. This is, it's not, nothing here happened that was inappropriate. We just wanted the community process there. We thought that their voice was important. And, you know, I would expect that same process, no matter who the chief is, and, you know, excited to see what we can do moving forward here. Thank you.
Thank you. First round, Councilmember Warwick.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to save my remarks till the end, but I guess we're doing it now, so that's fine. I just want to say that in, in his four months as Acting Chief, Chris Ragland worked with council members, including myself, on programs and policies that residents have been asking for, for the bureau, from the bureau for a very long time. He was a champion of our Vision Zero initiative to eliminate traffic deaths in the city and had recently launched a dedicated neighborhood policing program focused on traffic violation hotspots to raise awareness and change reckless and distracted driving behaviors. Regarding his appointment to become chief, he was more than happy to talk with community members about his work and vision for the force. I know this because over the past month, he has come to community meeting after community meeting in my district, bringing officers from Zone 4 and answering resident questions and concerns. When asked by a number of our Black political leadership organizations to have a town hall, he was happy to oblige. That is when members of this body got involved. Members who we know had been planning for weeks to slow this appointment down as much as possible. One town hall became six and ultimately, the prospect of confirmation was pushed weeks and then months away, possibly until after May, undermining Ragland's ability to lead the bureau and fully implement policies and programs that our residents were asking of him. At the end of the day, Chris Ragland decided he had had enough of politicians using his life and his 31-year career at the bureau as what he described as a political football. It is this very same type of behavior that is terrorizing our federal workers in Washington, DC. And while I recognize the desire for politicians to score political points, we should not be doing it at the expense of our most dedicated employees and public servants.
I guess that's not what she's doing though.
I wish Chris Ragland all the best for his next chapter and I thank him for his 31 years of service to this city. He would have made an outstanding chief. I hope for those who politicized his nomination, the win was worth it, because in the end, it is the people of Pittsburgh who are losing out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, first round? Second round, Councilman Cock, oh, I'm sorry, Council President.
Did I have first round?
Yes.
So just briefly, on the actual bill itself, I believe we should actually withdraw this bill if we want to introduce a separate bill that speaks to a process by which we confirm a chief, that's one thing, but the, I mean, the literal title of the bill is an extension of the Acting Chief Ragland for 90 days of which he no longer exists. So therefore, technically, we should just withdraw this bill and if we want to introduce a separate bill speaking to the process, so be it, but I think we should withdraw this one today.
Thank you. Second round, Councilman Coghill followed by Councilwoman Kelsmith.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So first of all, I'm not going to demonize Acting Chief Ragland, okay? He was in a tough situation in the way of, in the wake of what happened with our previous chief, Skorato, right? For this council to be, for this council to take the word of the mayor and actually approve this acting chief after three months is just unacceptable for me. And Councilwoman Warwick, you'd said that it was after the groups, BPEP and NAACP, that this council then got involved. No, it was us that got them involved. So we wanted to come up with a process, a better process than what we have. We came to a consensus with that group and there was probably 30 of us at the table and I never thought we'd walk out of there with a consensus, but we did. It was a little more meetings than what I was hoping for. Again, Councilwoman Kelsmith said- Again, Councilwoman Kell Smith said, I was lobbying for three, we settled on six, one in each police zone. Now, I just want to explain this to you, right? This process would have taken six to eight weeks, right? Cost us nothing, nothing. And I feel like the groups that we had in that room, and not only that, every zone was going to get a chance to come out and question and hear from Chief Ragland. And he was going to have every opportunity to prove himself to the public. For me, I still feel that process that actually Councilwoman Kell Smith really worked on hard and thought through with some of those leaders at the table. I believe that's the best way to, whether it's our new Acting Chief or a chief that somebody's going to put up in the, that the mayor's going to put up in the future, I believe that's the best way to do it, to have six zone meetings. You compare that to the chief, Skorato, it was over a year, it was $100,000. It was done behind closed doors, people were sworn to secrecy. This is the most transparent, open process there is. And for Chief Ragland to indicate or to imply that, you know, it was council and he was being pressured, well, I will tell you this, my last conversation with him was, he was more than willing and was looking forward to going through these meetings, okay? Meeting the public and proving himself out there. And my last word to him was, well, if you make it through these meetings, and I fully anticipated he would, I said, you will have my vote. So I'm a little perplexed as to how things went down yesterday. I personally feel it was an excuse to save face. I believe the real truth is, he probably had a better offer, and maybe he didn't want to have to go through the politics. Who does want to have to go through the politics? Well, welcome to City Hall, okay? And when you're a police chief, you are dealing with politicians now. And if you are going to bail out because a little bit of pressure was put on you, or you didn't like the process that we put in, then I agree with Councilman Charland, he was not the right person, okay? If you can't deal with a little bit of scrutiny, especially in the wake of Chief Skorato and that fiasco, well, you're just not the right person. And if you're not willing to go around and meet different people in different zones throughout the city, well, your, your willingness isn't there. And again, I compare that process to our previous process. Hundred thousand dollars, over a year, we end up with a chief who quit in 12, 16 months, or somewhere in there. I don't know when he quit, but it was a little over a year. This new process, even though it seems lengthy at the time, because I feel everybody's so desperate and needs to get a, a chief in there, you know, pales in comparison to that. It cost us nothing, okay? We were going to supply the food and the, and the water, I think, at these zone, zone meetings. So good riddance, I say. I don't know why he changed his mind. He was up for it. Director Schmidt was going to help coordinate them with, with all the neighborhoods and, and the neighborhood public safety committees. And I guess at the, in the end, he decided not to. But the last I talked to Chief Ragland, or Acting Chief Ragland, was, he was up for the challenge, okay? So, and if he left because a little bit of scrutiny from council, and maybe some hard talks with me, so be it. He was not prepared to take on this job. That's it. And I'll, I'll comment on second round if, if need be. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Yeah, this is exactly what I was trying to avoid. I, first of all, I want to go through my part of this. When we first met with the groups, they did reach out to us first, but it was because Brandy Fisher made a phone call to us requesting three meetings, and then we got an email from Daylon Davis. I talked to Councilman Coghill and to others and said, I feel like we need to bring people together to try to figure out what's going on here. And we had also received a ton of information from officers with complaints. So between all those different things, we tried to figure out, how could we get a chief that the mayor wants in there? I told you the whole story and then why we came about, what we came about, and how we came about this decision. But the only people making this political are the people that want to blame council. I get that there's a political, you know, time right now where there's a campaign going on for the mayor's race. So I think that this is a way to put the blame on council. First, it was the blame on the organizations because they wanted the meetings, then it's the blame is on council, because, you know, somebody's going to attack the mayor because we don't have a chief or because we have five chiefs. I'm going to be honest with you, this is the part that I don't want to have happen because I think no matter who was in office, no matter what's going on, we've had trouble with the Bureau and we've had some dissension between the Bureau, and we are losing a lot of officers. So no matter who was in there, I do think that there was going to be some challenges with the Police Bureau. But when you're making statements and having a chief on his way out to make the comments that he made without, after having a meeting and agreeing to a process and thinking that it was okay and we were all great, and they were just going to try to meet with additional officers to try to get everybody working together and understanding that morale was so low that they were going to try to build it up. So when you leave that way, and then the next thing you hear is the media, especially KDKA, who does a really good job of carrying the message across for them, making comments about the chief or the council and, and our, our part in that. It is our job to approve a chief. It is our job to outline a process. Those are our responsibilities. So we can deflect and say that, you know, we don't want to do it, but the fact of the matter is, we wouldn't have to do it if we didn't have all the issues going on currently in the Bureau and currently with previous, or, or with previous chiefs. And now, on the way out the door, Chief Ragland makes some comments, and this is all now trying to be deflected onto council. Well, I will just say this, I didn't pick the first chief, I didn't pick the last chief, I didn't pick any chiefs in between. They came over to us. And the only thing I did say is, after we spent a ton of money on a national search, that the best officer we could come up with was somebody who broke somebody's neck in a training. So I thought that we need to, council needed to be a little bit more actively involved. So actively involved and micromanaging the department are two different things. I think council has a responsibility to the public safety, for the safety of this, of the city of Pittsburgh and our residents. And making them safe doesn't mean you just take somebody that follows just one person's direction in that they're nominated by maybe somebody who runs a foundation or something like that. It's because you take people who are going to do what needs to be done for the Bureau. And, and being safe means our officers have to have confidence in their leader. And a lot of people did have confidence in, in Ragland's, I want to be really clear, they really thought that he really knew what he, he was talking about when it came to running the Bureau. They just didn't like the way he talked to people and, and the way he talked with his officers. So that led us to some conversations. And then when the public said that they had concerns, then we thought, okay, we have to address this. But I just want to be very clear, th- this was never political on our part, even though we have political roles and we are here to represent what the people want. When we speak, we are speaking for the people, and, and that we had a lot of concerns. And you can't just say that all those groups and officers were both sharing concerns and we're supposed to totally ignore those and think, just, just move forward and approve a chief. The chief had no problems attending those meetings. He had no problems working with council members. He had no problems working with the members of, of the Bureau and trying to build a better relationship. What I said was, maybe what we ought to do is, before we put somebody in a directorship or before we put somebody in as a chief, we should be providing training on how they can talk with people and can, and can do their discipline in a way that gives people, respects people and their rights. And maybe we failed in that way because we didn't provide those trainings. But other than that, I, I will say that I think we're going to outline a public process going forward for whomever a chief is. And I don't think we should be putting forward a chief right before an election, no matter who it is. We just got done paying out a tremendous amount for a pension for somebody who'd left here before we thought he was going to leave. So yes, we need to be a little bit more methodical and a little bit more careful on selecting a chief and the timing of selecting a chief, because what we don't want is for somebody to leave again and for the Bureau to be in the middle of chaos again. We have a really great Acting Chief right now, Marty Divine, he's amazing. But there's going to be somebody who's going to say something better no matter who we appoint, no matter who's elected. This is a difficult job. And so I just want to say, whoever is going to be the Acting Chief, I'm ready to work with them, but I'm, I want them to also be willing to have a public process should they ever be put forward as a nominee. So I will ta, I will make a motion to table this today, and then I will introduce new legislation next week that outlines the public process, which is what I did ask for in the first place. So I'll make sure that my staff, you know, puts it together. Thank you.
Thank you. There will be a motion coming. Is there, are, are there any other comments for second, second round? Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone, you know, for their comments. You know, I, you know, first want to thank Chief Ragland for his three decades of service. I did get a chance to see him as he was leaving City Hall yesterday, and I didn't realize that cameras were rolling when I gave him a hug and, you know, wished him the best, but I could tell that, you know, he was, you know, having a tough moment as he was heading over to have his press conference. I just kind of want to, you know, start my comments by, you know, you know, knowing that, you know, we are in a, in a political season and, you know, it, it's a, a very difficult, you know, conversation ahead, but I do what, just want to, you know, send him some positive energy and hope that, that, you know, he's going to end up in a good place. You know, I think this is, you know, extremely unfortunate for the city, and we really do need to have some certainty at the leadership of the Police Bureau. I was not in any of those meetings or not aware of any, you know, pressure or, or things that may have been applied, so I can't speak on that. I'm not going to speak. Out of school, I do think it's unfortunate that he arrived at a place where he believed that the situation become politicized. I look forward to reaching out with him, and I told him, before he headed over to his press conference, that I would like to have a conversation with him and get some more insight on, on how he arrived at that place, you know, and what, you know, made him feel like he was, you know, making, you know, he was, found himself in, I guess, what he described as an ethical dilemma. And I would hope that at some point, if he's comfortable, he would share that with the public as well, you know, because I think that, you know, only he can really provide that insight, you know, of, of how he, he arrived there, and I don't want to speculate, you know, from my point of view, of, of what happened in, in meetings that I wasn't in and conversations I, I wasn't a part of to further kind of contribute, you know, to this environment, you know, that we, that we find ourselves in right now, which is, is extremely unfortunate, you know, for the city of Pittsburgh. I do agree with Councilwoman Kell Smith's, you know, comments of trying to remove, you know, politics as much as possible, you know, from this process when we're dealing with public safety. And, you know, I, I hope that we can get to a place as we get through, you know, these tough conversations that are inevitable, including, you know, this tough conversation that we're having around the table right now, that we can come together with the stakeholders to have a process that's transparent, that engages the public, but also finds the right leadership for the Bureau to continue our work, so that our communities are lively, that they're safe and, and they're prosperous, you know, all over the city. So I look forward to that process, but again, I want to send my best and thank Chief Ragland for his three decades of service to the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Third round, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm only speculating here, right? As to why Chief Ragland feels he was pressured, all right? I do believe he's probably pointing that toward me. And in our meeting, I will tell you, that we had at my office with Schmidt, Divine, Councilwoman Kell Smith, and Charland, I stressed, and I still stress, and, and I don't know why he feels pressured about this, this is just the facts of today, I feel, after, you know, our last chief. I stressed that it's important to me for him to win my vote, of course, one out of nine votes that need, you know, to, to confirm him, that I wanted to make sure who he was having around him, meaning the Assistant Chiefs, meaning the commanders. I want to know who his hierarchy was going to be, only because I was embarrassed as to way things went down. And I don't know Chief Ragland that well. I can't say that I've known him like I know other people that are in the department, throughout the department. I will tell you this, not one conversation was had between me and another, you know, commander or, or anybody in any other rank as to a deal or something, you know, nefarious or pressing Chief Ragland. I did stress that it's important for me to know who he's surrounding himself with. I think he felt like I was trying to fill those positions or that he was being pressed into taking people in those positions. Again, nobody in particular, I will tell you, but yeah, I certainly wanted to know who he was going to put in the higher positions. I want to know who's going to pick up the phone for me as a Public Safety Chairman. And if he doesn't understand that, that's just too bad. That is the politics of it. There was no kid pro quo here, simply me stating that it's important, if you want to win my vote, to let me know who I will be calling in, whether it's the Assistant Chiefs, commanders, you name it, the hierarchy, as to who you're putting in these positions. If that's what scared him away, I'm sorry for that. It's a shame, and it just tells me he doesn't have the backbone for this job. But I will tell you this, all those conversations were well before we all came to an agreement as to these six public safety meetings, okay? Chief Ragland was on board, Director Schmidt was on board. So what changed from that time till now? I, again, I will say, I don't know, I guess he is a better offer and doesn't have the, doesn't, doesn't have the heart for it. And I will say this too, to that, I believe Chief Ragland didn't want to come to this table under oath, okay? And I believe that's one of the reasons why he chose to move on. And I'm not going to get into details as far as that goes, but, so, you know, if he's directing it towards me, I'll be glad to have that conversation in public, on air, you name it. But, you know, I was doing nothing but as far as, as far as I'm concerned, is to protecting the Police Department. And I will say this about Chief Ragland, I was not going to rush into a vote with Chief Ragland, as the mayor wanted us to. I was not going to do it. I had an unprecedented amount of rank and file calling me and said they had issues with him. I don't know what their issues are. I take that with a grain of salt. You're in leadership position, I'm sure people have issues with me. People probably have issues with all of us who are in a leadership, leadership position. So, but it was an extraordinary amount, and it was enough for me that warranted, we need a, a new process, we weren't just going to sit down and approve or disapprove of Chief Ragland. So Chief Ragland's welcome back to this table anytime. We could talk, he could be under oath, and I'll put myself under oath if he so chooses. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further for third round?
Motion, can I make a motion?
Council, Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Thank you, and I do want to clarify, I think I called Brandy Fisher, I don't want to say that she called, because I'm not positive. But anyway, motion to table and will bring back.
Thank you, thank you. There's a motion to table, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, we'll take a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sorry, aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger Chair.
Aye.
Ays and aye, no zero, bill is tabled.
Thank you very much. Bill is tabled. We now move on to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilmember Warwick.
Bill number 1541, ordinance amending the city code at Title IV, Public Places and Property. Article I, Public Right of Way, Chapter 417, to permanently adopt the sidewalk and curb repair program to provide assistance to eligible property owners.
Motion to approve, discussion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, with discussion, Councilmember Warwick.
Yeah, I'd like to call Director Lucas to the table. Thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah, of course, yeah, sure, 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 of course.
Good morning. Kim Lucas, Director for the City's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Good morning. Chris Hornstein, Director of Public Works.
Good morning. Stephanie Gagnon, Management Analyst for the Office of Management and Budget.
Yeah, so thank you for coming up. I am a big fan of this program, so if you just want to talk a little bit about it and the neighborhoods that we're looking to do, thank you.
Sure, thank you. So this, we have come back to the table today to extend the sidewalk and curb repair program. As we're all aware, in the city of Pittsburgh, where we have over 1,000 miles of roadway and we have many, many, many miles of sidewalks, that the sidewalks are actually the responsibility of the adjacent property owners. We know that in many locations, sidewalks are either in a state of disrepair where they're not passable or they're entirely missing. We do have, as a city, a robust sidewalk repair program. We have used local money, I believe, and grants in the past to construct sidewalks, but previously, we were not able to sort of partner with private property owners to build sidewalks that they would otherwise be responsible for maintaining and to collect money from them for that. So in the last couple of years, we've been piloting a program to be able to extend the reach of the work of the city and to, instead of hinder locals, neighbors who may not be able to afford to keep their sidewalks in the condition that they would like to, to be able to partner with them, because we know how to build sidewalks as a city, and this is a way to recoup some of the costs of that work. So I can talk a little bit more about the communities the very, very limited pilot has started in?
Yeah, please.
Okay. know how to build sidewalks as a city and this is a way to recoup some of the costs of that work. So I can talk a little bit more about the communities the very, very limited pilot has started in?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So, um, in 2025, we are proposing that we have projects in Homewood, Perry South, Hazelwood and Carrick. In previous years, and I'm looking at my notes because there's a lot of good information, um, was that actually the previous years that we were in those communities? I apologize. Um, in 2025, we plan to go to the Hill District, Larmer, Belts Hoover, Stanton Heights and Wing Gap, Wing Gap. And these are either city-owned property. I am really messing this up, sorry. Those are places where we are building sidewalks but are not part of this program proposal because those are places where the properties are either city-owned or, um, they're, they are grant-funded. So they're not places that we're going to try to seek reimbursement from property owners. I apologize for skipping my notes too quickly there. Um, Stephanie, would you like to?
Yes. Uh, the first, the first batch of, um, Neighborhoods Director Lucas mentioned, that is where we were, um, proposing to do the sidewalk repair work and seek reimbursement for those property owners in those locations. Um, in the past two years, um, we've had a more limited scope, um, but we have completed projects in Homewood, Sheridan and Garfield through this program.
Um, yeah, I think, and just one thing I, I want to mention and you probably don't have the numbers for this, but you know, as, as a city, um, we, as, and, and as taxpayers, we pay an enormous amount to pave our streets, right? We pay lots of money for cars to be able to drive smoothly through our streets. But, um, uh, our sidewalks, you know, folks are responsible for their own sidewalk, which makes it difficult to maintain our sidewalks. Personally, I would love down the road, I know we've talked about referendums to have some kind of a sidewalk tax or something like that, to actually have it, or some kind of a dedicated fund to remove the burden entirely from homeowners, um, because it, it, it seems like an archaic way to deal with sidewalks, to have it be each individual and then, you know, citing people, et cetera, et cetera. But, um, short of that much bigger, longer-term change that, um, I would love to continue exploring, I think that this is a good, um, uh, small step that we can take to make that burden, uh, easier on, uh, on our property owners. So that's all for me.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Thank you. I actually love the idea of fixing up our sidewalks because I think that they're just a mess all over the city and whether or not they're owned by an individual or not, a lot of people just can't afford it. But I do notice that, uh, the properties that you did in Sheridan have a lot of absentee landlords. And I felt that, um, that was concerning to me because there's people that are living here every day that aren't, but I understand it's connective and all that stuff. But I'm wondering if you have any, um, success in the collection of getting the, because what I was told at the time was that you were going to be reimbursed by those absentee landlords or, or that you would collect that money. So, uh, the taxpayers weren't paying to have their properties, you know, fixed up and, and, and into code when their homes and their properties are, are, you know, not up to code necessarily. So do we, do we have successes? How many people have we collected from? Do you have any of that information?
Um, yeah, I don't have the number of how many, um, but I believe we are getting reimbursed for about $14,000 of that work, um, where previously we hadn't.
And how much does it cost to do a sidewalk?
It was, we were charging, um, so it actually charges around $300 per square yard. And through the first kind of iteration of this program, we were charging only $75 per square yard. Um, so we are proposing to up that, um, cost to actually be closer to reimbursement.
So I really like a list of who that is and who you're collecting from because if you can collect money from them for their absentee, you know, for the repairing their sidewalks, we should be able to collect money for them from citations and from other things so that we can also, I mean, people are, we heard yesterday at a meeting in Carrick, um, and I don't defend a lot of people, but I want to be honest with you, I, I, Councilman Coghill knows this. I said yesterday, I heard people yelling, you know, at the mayor because they were upset because the properties were not demoed and that there have been so many, uh, structures still standing. And the fact of the matter is, it costs so much and, and that there's a lot of absentee landlords. And so, um, you know, I, I want to make sure everybody knows, when the county, you know, changed the way that we abate asbestos in vacant buildings, the properties went from, I think, around four to five thousand, maybe eight thousand, to now forty, forty, forty to fifty thousand for an average home. So that's why there is such a struggle now that there wasn't before with these homes. But the other part is that we can't reach the absentee landlords. But if you're reaching them to collect money for this, we should be reaching them to do something with their properties. So I just want to make sure that, um, we're addressing that a little bit more, you know, collectively. That's it for me. But I'd like a list of who you collected from, so I can see.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I also just want to say I'm really excited and encouraged about this program and I, um, since Councilwoman Warwick brought up, um, you know, how many miles of sidewalks we have and that there were times and places where cities maintain all sidewalks, um, which is beyond our capacity now, but is definitely, uh, I think, uh, a really good vision. Um, and I indulge me for one minute while I tell a story I've told at the table before, but it's been quite a few years, where I was looking at one of those historic photos from maybe the Pitt Archive of Historic, or maybe your own archivist of Historic Pittsburgh DPW Workers. So on the side of not a vehicle but a horse wagon with horses was City of Pittsburgh Department of Public Works. And the workers were shoveling snow. And I kept coming back to this photo. It's from this kind of like brown sepia colored photos. And I just, I think it was the course of a week, I kept looking at it because I was just completely fascinated. And then I finally realized the workers were not shuttling the street. They were shoveling the sidewalks and of course, like putting the snow into a wagon to like cart away. Uh, but that was a city, they were ignoring the street, I guess, because, I don't know with horses and wagons, do you clear streets or not? But to Councilwoman Warwick's point, we spend an enormous amount of time inside the cartway. Um, but we have significant portions of our city where a significant portion of the city residents are reliant on the sidewalks. So I'm enthusiastic about this. I also think Councilwoman Smith's point about, um, getting reimbursed by the absentee landlords is a bonus of this program as well. Um, and I'll just remind council members, I, I don't really need to, but I'll remind the public that we are losing housing stock. At the same time, we're trying so hard to add housing stock. Councilman Mosley had a post agenda about blighted multifamily units. He brought it up yesterday as well in his comments. Um, and it's blighted single family. It's kind of, doesn't really matter what kind of structure it is. The absentee landlordism, um, is something that we would, we would have more housing if we had more powers, um, to address, um, the negligence of our absentee landlords. So that's all I'll say today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, thanks for bringing this to the, um, to the table here. It did have some questions around what, what will be the difference between, what do we, what's the advantage of bringing this into the code? And why, like, why would we bring this into the code now versus just keep it the way it is?
I can, I can answer that. Um, so legally, in order to enter into agreements with property owners for us to complete the reimbursement, um, we do have to have this in the code. Um, and that way we can charge them for the fee of replacing their sidewalk.
And if I may add on to that, um, if you, if you all recall, a few years ago, the code actually said that if the city built your sidewalk for you or fixed your sidewalk for you, we shall find the property essentially. And then council worked wonderfully to change that to say, we may, you know, lean your property if the city goes in and does this work. And now we've taken it to the next step where we can partner with the property owner. And so we want to make sure that we can extend that opportunity.
Okay. And so if we, uh, thanks for the explanation, but if we need to do, we need to have this in code in order to, you know, work with the, um, the, uh, property owners, then what's the, um, like, what was our process before that, that we were able to work with property owners?
We could lean them, is my understanding. That was our.
Okay, so we're leaning, like, the pilot phase or are we sticking to the leaning phase?
Well, prior, prior to that, we could cite folks and try to take them to court. Um, my understanding is that a lot of those didn't really get held up when it got to the magistrate's office. Um, or we could fix the sidewalk and choo, before, like I mentioned, the, originally the code said, we shall lean you. And then the language got, um, more flexible where it was may lean you because if the city was choosing to invest in fixing a sidewalk and the property owner didn't have an opportunity to participate, then we wanted to make sure that we weren't sort of doubling down on harming communities that could not afford sidewalk repair. Um, so now we have the opportunity to actually partner and enter these agreements so that we can get reimbursed. And something that I didn't mention previously, but that has been a feature of this program, is that the reimbursement amount is on a sliding scale based on, um, household income. And so people who can afford more are paying more, people who can't afford as much are paying less. And this is a way that this program has been really nimble and responsive to the communities that it's working within.
Okay. Um, and that changed to shall, uh, to may, that was made prior to the pilot program?
Correct. I, it's been since 2019 that that got changed. It might have been 2019, 2020.
So, okay. And so then that allowed us to do a pilot program and we were able to work with the, with the resident. Um, but we just didn't lean, right? I just want to make sure I get this correct. And now we're saying that we need to have this in code because legally we, it's better to have that so that we can work with property owners. Would you understand this piece of it?
Sorry. Sorry if I'm being confusing. When it, the language changed from shall to may, that gave the city the ability to choose whether or not we wanted to lean a property that we repaired the sidewalk for or not lean the property. It did not give us the opportunity to ask the property owner to pay us for that work. It only, uh, removed the obligation of the city to lean the property if they did this type of work. So this pilot program, what was new about it is that we are now allowed to ask property owners for reimbursement and to enter into an agreement to pay the city, which is not something that was allowed by code previously.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand if we were able to do that before the code, then why, why the code?
We, um, we introduced, uh, the pilot program as a, like a temporary addition to the code. Um, so it had expired, um, I believe last November.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Yeah, that makes sense. That, that's the part I was looking for. Wait a second. Like, there's, there's something I'm missing here. Okay. Okay, yeah, thanks for explaining that. And then how will this, how, I see that there's, you know, um, there's no outline here for what's next in terms of like where repairs will be done? Does that mean that there is an internal decisions that the department makes or how's this, how's this going to happen?
Uh, so we have draft projects, um, working with DOMI, we have identified, uh, areas in Homewood, Perry South, Hazelwood and Carrick for this project. And then not, uh, able to be part of this project, but DOMI will be working on projects in the Hill District, Larmer, Belts Hoover, Stanton Heights and Wing Gap separately. Um, so for those projects, those are either grant-funded or city-owned property.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions first round? Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, just, I think I just have, uh, one question. Um, besides the categories of, you said there was some publicly owned property and then, and some grant funding. Um, you know, was there any other considerations or rationale into choosing, um, the areas that have been chosen for both projects?
Yeah, sure. So we have in here that we, um, look at 311s. We're looking at requests from council offices and the mayor's office. In our first iteration of the pilot, when we, um, started in Homewood, I think we had a project in Homewood, um, we had safer routes to school areas. And we also in Homewood had a complete sidewalk inventory, which was the first in the city for any community that we were, we had a grant to do an active transportation plan through there. So we went to places where we knew that there were a lack of safe access for people who are walking to transit and other resources. So we will continue to use that sort of data-driven approach when we have it. Um, there's a partnership that's brewing with some local nonprofits, including Pittsburghers for Public Transit and bigger groups like AARP to do more of those sidewalk inventories, to give us that data so that we know where we are missing the most critical connections to our vulnerable populations.
Thank you.
Any further comments first round? Uh, I, I just had a question. So I'm fully supportive of this. I'm glad that we're taking it from pilot to something more permanent. Um, everyone deserves to have sidewalks that are passable and don't force you to trip or are impassable at all. Um, I know that about two years ago, we also received $9 million for tree planting efforts with the city of Pittsburgh and all the tree or organizations out there in Shade Tree Commission. And I also know that it's been incredibly difficult to convince some neighborhoods and some neighbors to plant trees. And I also know that trees, the trees that were planted 60 years ago were improper for, you know, um, sitting adjacent to our sidewalks. And some of the reasons why our sidewalks are lifted and, you know, are tripping hazards. Is there any effort to, to marry these two efforts? To replace sidewalks and also work with property owners? Or if it's an absentee landlord, just to plant a tree there and to, you know, um, spend the money that we have and to, you know, enjoy all the benefits of trees in neighborhoods, like reducing the heat island effect, adding greenery, adding property values, all sorts of things?
Yeah, absolutely. So we definitely partner with DOMI in Public Works, um, to identify those locations for tree boxes, either whether they don't exist or where they currently exist or where they might have been inappropriate or maybe be more beneficial and with residents as well, if that's something that they want. Um, there's a lot that goes into that that has to be figured out whether or not a tree box can be done. It's pretty technical.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I know that our teams collaborate like really closely and look for those opportunities all the time. We share with them our, um, our Shade Tree Canopy Equity Index so that we can know, um, you know, those neighborhoods that we're going to be doing sidewalk work in, if there's also a need for canopy. So we do actively work to identify opportunities. I think we had a couple of opportunities in these last go-arounds. So we're always looking for, for more ways that we can plant trees to the benefit of the public.
Great. Glad to hear that conversation's happening. Yeah. Um, I had a thought and it slipped out of my head, so I will leave it there. Any further discussion on Bill, uh, 1541? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1541, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation? Thank you very much for joining us. Bill 1542.
Bill 1542, Resilience Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into an Agreement, Agreements and/or Amendments with the United States Army Corps of Engineers for the Purpose of Geophysical Surveying by the U.S.A. at Arsenal Park at No Cost to the City.
Uh, motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Second with discussion, Councilmember Warwick.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, Director, thank you for staying. And I know we have some folks online to, um, help explain this project. So Director, if you'd like to kick it off and then we can.
Absolutely. Thank you. So this project, um, the, the Army Corps of Engineers Baltimore District reached out to my office, um, to discuss doing site investigation in Arsenal Park, um, for the purposes of looking for, um, unexploded ordinances. So they were requesting right of entry. Um, as part of that process, um, there would be community engagement with the public to, you know, to help them understand. Um, they've, you know, confirmed with me that none of this is invasive, so no parts of the park are going to be torn up. Um, but, you know, we have guests here from Army Corps of Engineers Baltimore District, Julie Kaiser, Dawn Finney, I believe. So, um, I wanted to invite them, uh, to speak now if they would and just kind of give us a brief overview of the project and then just allow questions.
Thank you, Chris. I, I'm Julie Kaiser with the Army Corps of Engineers in Baltimore. Uh, we are assigned with the responsibility of conducting, uh, environmental investigations in, um, in Pennsylvania. Uh, we discovered, uh, Allegheny Arsenal as a formerly, formerly used defense site, um, in 2017, when cannonballs were discovered during construction of the Arsenal 201 apartment complex. Um, we have a very stringent process that we follow for determining eligibility for our, um, for properties into our program. We've gone through that. We've conducted a preliminary assessment and determined that further investigation is needed to determine if there are additional areas of concern on the remaining property that is not developed. Um, so, um, So we have decided to conduct this investigation in phases and we really don't know if there's anything remaining in the ground. So our first phase is to evaluate with several different types of, three different types of geophysical sensors, whether there are any signatures underground that are indicative of additional cannonball burial pits which were, have been found in the northern portion of property close to the river. The property extends from essentially the railroad on the northern end to the county property where the Collag Campus of the County Health Department is. So it, it goes from the railroad to Pennsylvania Avenue, I believe it is. I can't remember the name of that street, but beyond the park. Arsenal Park is within the footprint of the former arsenal. We really don't suspect anything in that portion of the property, but to be sure that there's nothing there buried underground, we want to conduct the investigation over the portions of the park that are accessible. And our target date is somewhere around mid-April for, for conducting the investigation over the park. So part of our process is to gain, to obtain a legal confirmation of what we call our right of entry. And this is a very well-established process that we go through to get permission to, to do our work. And that's what we are interested in getting a signature on from a representative of the city. Not sure who that would be. So that's what we're interested in resolving sometime soon. And I guess I would like to ask, is there any questions about the investigation in general at this point before I turn it over to Dawn Finney, who is, works for our real estate division and she's in charge of obtaining our rights of entry with, with landowners? Any questions?
You can, feel free to proceed and we'll, we'll take questions in order after you finish. Thank you.
Okay. Dawn, would you be willing to, to share the right of entry process with us?
Absolutely. With the right of entry process, it's just an agreement that we would enter just to give us permission to survey the property.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
I could emphasize also that we are, as Chris has pointed out, we are not doing any intrusive work whatsoever. That would happen if we found something during the geophysical surveys that was indicative of munitions. We would come back in a later phase and ask for your permission to do another investigation, which would involve digging, you know, finding that metallic anomaly again and then digging to see what that anomaly really is. Sometimes we pick up items that don't have anything to do with munitions. We actually have to dig them out of the ground in order to completely identify them. But again, we don't suspect anything in the Arsenal Park area. It was filled over time and, and none of the burial operations are known to have occurred in that, in that portion of the property.
And any further, any further comments from Councilwoman, Councilmember Warwick?
I don't.
Okay, thank you. And so we'll move on to Councilwoman Gross, who I know has her hand up.
Oh, I'm so sorry that you couldn't hear me. I thought I was unmuted. Apologize. Hi, thanks for, to the Army Corps folks. I represent Lawrenceville and Arsenal Park. And so I just want to make sure that you know how grateful we are for your help in the first removal. She said, I think it was 2017 or 2018, when excavation of the site for construction of the first phase of 900 apartment units, which was the first phase, starting with the building of 250 units, came across the buried munitions that no one knew was there. And so we're really incredibly grateful. And also for this, I'm fully supportive of this work as well. I hope my council members will support it. Thank you so much to Director Bernstein as well for coordinating so that we can all be sure that there is no ordinance for explosives left. As you know, Arsenal Park was the site of the explosion in, at the middle of the Civil War that killed nearly 80 civilians, most of them children, as they were making the munitions for the battles of the Civil War. And it's a very important site to the neighborhood and the history of the city. And that road that is at the high end of the park is Penn Avenue, which is, for your information, the historic Lincoln Highway. So it's a great historical site. We appreciate that you're going to use the kind of non-invasive methods and have agreed to do extensive community outreach, which is so important. This is again, a highly used, well-loved site. So thank you for all your help. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to point out, we are planning to have a public meeting and I, we have been in communication with city representatives and, trying to find my email. So we're, we're shooting for April 2nd. It's a Wednesday evening. Venue to be determined, but it would be maybe six o'clock in the evening. Anybody who could make suggestions of how to get the word out to the community would be most welcome. And I just wanted to share with you who we've been in communication with. I'm really sorry, the email is not coming up.
Let me just jump in and say that's totally fine. You can coordinate with my office. I represent all the surrounding areas, so we don't want you to take up, no more time on me. Thank you, though, appreciate it. Yep, okay, all right. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Anything further from members? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1542, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation? Thank you very much. Thanks to our invited guests. That moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilperson Charlene.
Bill 1529, resolution, amending resolution number 655 of 2023 entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with Pittsburgh Event Child Care for Professional Services in Connection with On-Site Child Care being provided to the City of Pittsburgh employees during the day school is not in session. Additionally, off-site childcare will be provided for those attending community events sponsored by the mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and providing for the payment of the costs thereof by increasing the total amount not to exceed by $45,000 for a new total amount not to exceed $90,000 and extending the program for an additional year.
Motion approved.
Is there a second? Councilwoman Kell Smith.
I just want to, there was RFP for this mission?
I do not have a note that there was any kind of waiver.
There wasn't, that's all I want to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So generally, for, for general purposes, the agenda would note that there was a waiver granted if there was no RFP provided.
Just one of the.
Yeah, you still have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Would you, would you mind coming to the table? I'm sorry. I was trying to keep you away. No, I was trying to, it's not funny.
Human Resources.
Sure. I'm ready. Time to get this scheduled.
It's all right.
Thank you for your, for your work there and your patience with us. Just, I'm curious, so how do you know who's watching the kids? Do they have licenses, all that and stuff?
Yes. We have a company that we previously used. It's the same company that we're asking for an extension. We have all their, their information.
Make sure they, they track the, for the models.
Yes, we do.
And then the other thing I'd really love to see is this extended action. I would like to see it extended into like the early childhood learning centers in the city of Pittsburgh with the school district. I would love to see a partnership where we are providing free services like this, you know, when schools are out of session and childcare is getting so costly for families and it, it is so hard for people to work, it's hard for them not to work. And so I would love to see us be able to offer something more if we can look into this, what it would cost to do this when the school, when school's out of session and more full term in the early childhood centers. If we could just get some estimates of that and maybe we could see if we could, you know, do an RFP and find some funding. I'm just curious. Something the Women's Caucus has been really concerned with, the kids in the, in the early childhood stuff, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Warwick?
Yes, I remember talking about this a while ago and I guess I was just, so where in, is it in the city county building? Where's the?
Yes.
Okay.
We have room 445. We take all the tables, chairs, remove everything that's in there. And they did ask for a separate room for different ages.
Okay.
But we don't have the capacity to do that, so we are in 445. They bring in all supplies, they bring in everything.
Okay, so and is it, is it aligned with PPS? Like if they have a half day or they have a, a working day with teachers or something like that?
In essence, it is. So what we do is if there is a day where the city employees are required to be at work, but the Pittsburgh Public Schools are off for a full day, then we will schedule something in advance with the daycare provider.
Okay, great. And, and can any city workers, like so if I say I'm working DPW or something out there, could I drop my kid and then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, you can. All, all employees.
Okay. And do you have to sign up or can you just?
Yes.
You do?
We ask you to sign up.
Okay.
So we know how many children, age group. We also ask for you to sign your child in and out. We also offer any information on the childcare facility that you request.
And so for sign, and I'm just asking for the benefit of, of employees who are listening. So if you, if you sign up, do you have to do that ahead of time? Like if you know the day off is coming?
Yes.
Okay. And then is there limited space or how, how is, how has usage been?
Usage has been the most. We've had, say, 15 to 20 kids so far.
Wow, okay, okay. Great. And then the other question I had, so I see this for community meetings for the mayor's office, is that also something that other departments can take advantage of or is it just?
It's, if you're part of that community meeting and you need daycare that, at that time, like if the community meeting's in the evening, which they usually are, then if you're an employee and you need to bring your child to work while you're at work, they can be in that daycare.
Oh, so it's not?
It's also for the public.
Oh, okay.
Who, who may have to bring their child.
So is that like, so let, well, I guess two questions. So one, is it just for, for community meetings organized by the mayor's office or is it for, like let's say city planning wants to do one for whatever, for some meeting or?
We probably could arrange that.
Okay.
If they request it, we could arrange that.
Okay. And then how does that work? So let's just say hypothetically, like McGee Rec Center, right? Like, you know, I organize a community meeting, do they, do we let them know ahead of time and then they connect with the location and figure out where?
Yes, they do come out and visit the location or they'll ask us to send us, send them a picture of the location, you know, how big the room is, how many kids, you know, the ages. So everything is mostly done in advance.
Right. Great. This is, I, you know, I, I love this. I think it's, you know, yeah, childcare is obviously always difficult. And I agree with Councilwoman Smith. I would, I would like to see.
Write that down.
And something that I've, something that I've been talking with Director Vargas and, and some of our school board folks is ways that the city, city parks in particular can fill the gap in that out of school time in, you know, in, in, in PPS buildings, so a partnership that way, which, you know, obviously childcare is a huge need for families all over the city. And, yeah, and we provide great after-school programming in our rec centers, but if you don't have a rec center right by the school, it's not, you know what I mean? Especially now with all this moving around of, of PPS buildings and whatnot. So very timely and yeah, I'm glad to see this program getting extended and I'm glad people are using it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Any further discussion first round? I, I have a question. So just based on Councilmember Warwick's question, I know the first iteration of this, I don't know, back in 2018 or something, there was a restriction that you had to work in the bill, in the CCB while your child was also here, but that was a different vendor. I'm assuming it's because of a different vendor, you can drop off, go work wherever in the city that you normally work in and then?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's a, that's a really important distinction because that was, I think, limiting to some of the, to many of our workers who.
Okay.
Work down the street or anywhere throughout the city, so good to hear. Okay. Any further discussion on Bill 1529? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1529, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation? Thank you very much. Bill 1530.
Bill 1530, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement or agreements with the County of Allegheny and Partner for Work for the Shared Operation and Administration of the Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program for calendar years 2025 through 2027 at no additional cost to the city.
Motion approved.
Second with discussion. With discussion, Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Thank you. I think I mentioned a little bit about this yesterday. Are you coming up?
I'll invite them up.
Good morning. Or still morning, yes. Good morning.
Do you want to introduce yourself to the public?
Absolutely. Felicity Williams, Deputy Chief of Staff, Allegheny.
Alexis Walker, Prosperity Manager for the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. My, my question is just where are the learn earned locations? And tell me a little bit about how, how many people are we serving from the city of Pittsburgh? That kind of stuff.
Absolutely. So I'm actually going to pass this to Alexis to talk a little bit about some of the, the details here, but I do want to make sure that you all know, we get an annual report each year from the Learn and Own program that can provide even more information to you. I do believe we sent that over yesterday, but if not, we're happy to reshare that with you all to make sure that you have additional information.
We do get it, but I just want to be clear.
Sure.
We, we used to get them and we still get them, but one of the things I mentioned just is that we used to see people doing these programs in our communities and stuff. I don't see that now. And so I'd just like to know where they are and how that's.
You want to talk to the, to the process?
I love the program. Let me just say that, okay?
We do too.
If it's helpful, Councilwoman, I can go through each district to show how many students we serve that way.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so in District 1, we had 98 youth place. In District 2, there was 85 youth place. In District 3, there was 76 youth place. In District 4, there was 77. In District 5, there was 41. In District 6, there was 171. In District 7, there was 28. In District 8, there was only 8. And then in District 9, there was 224. Now, last year, I can also add that we had several different application support centers throughout the city, all, like 18 locations of Carnegie libraries. We had Goodwill of Southwestern Pennsylvania. We had the Boys and Girls Club at six different locations. The Bloomfield-Garfield Corporation. And then Aubrey 401-2, as well as Phase Four in East Liberty. And then they had one within the county. This year, we have several different providers, three of which are new. Partner for Work, I think, is in the process of releasing their new provider list. So I'll, I'll wait until they do that. But as soon as they do that, we're happy to share all of the providers that will be serving youth in this upcoming cycle.
Who did, was it last year in District Two?
In District Two, the, who was a provider?
Yeah.
I can pull up the list for you, give me one second.
And this goes through a competitive RFP process through Partner for Work.
Okay, okay.
So they have providers, but then they also have work sites. So the providers are the entities who are responsible for managing a portion of the youth and, and helping to do some of the other soft skills development and programming that happens as a part of the Learn and Earn Program. And then ensuring that they are placed at their work sites, that they are getting their transportation to their work sites, so on and so forth.
I just remember we used to have applications we used to hand to kids or somebody would hand.
And we still do that.
So they do that, now that's good. But I remember I used to give it to community people that they would go on the streets and hand it to people they knew.
And we would love to have you all circulate that application with your districts and your constituencies. We're happy to collaborate with you all.
I'm glad you brought the application back because I think it was online for a little bit there. I mean, that's great if you have a computer at home or if you have access to, or if your family does, you know what I mean? But I love having the hard copy as well.
For sure, and that's part of the role of the application support centers, is to help provide people with access to computers and to help them complete and fill out those applications as well.
The one thing I wanted to add to, the application period for this cycle opens on March fourteenth. And at that point, the, the web-based application will be live, which we did work really hard in partnership with Partner for Work to condense that application just because we understand that it creates a lot of barriers for youth to actually get to a completed application to then be able to fully participate in the program. When we get those hard copies, I'm happy to bring those over to you all. And we would really love if each councilperson would attend the Learn and Earn kickoff press conference on March eighteenth. We can also have that invitation for you. But I think this would be a really good way to increase the amount of youth that we are serving in the city. This year, because there's been so many different program changes, we are not able to serve as many as before. But what we can say is the amount that youth will be paid has increased and it hasn't been increased in the past few years. So students will now be paid at a rate of twelve and then at the highest level fifteen because there's three different tiers of the program.
So we've been working with Partner for Work with previous providers, with youth who have gone through the program, with other community stakeholders, to really do some revamp and revision to the Learn and Earn Program over the last several years. And some of what Alexis outlined there for you is the result of some of those changes. So now that we have a tier depending on the age you are in the program, as an example.
And I did bring a copy of the new changes for all of you.
You have a memo on it.
Yeah, that I can pass around.
Well, you're on the ball here.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it for me, I just, I'll talk to, I'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Who the, the providers and all that kind of stuff. But I want to thank you. I'm happy that there's a hard copy and that you are still working with people in the community. Because our community, even though some of them aren't part of an organization, they love to go help the kids and do stuff with the kids.
And we have done in the years past.
You know Mrs. Bailey.
Yes, and we have done years past.
She goes on the street and hands people those applications and?
To ensure that we have application sites in the West End, done, you know, it's out there. We've utilized city facilities, some of our rec centers. We make sure that we have staff there to connect with youth as well. So happy to do that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Warwick followed by Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah, just so a quick question. Because I know in the past, it, it has sometimes been difficult to get enough employers to, so is that still? And are you still looking for employers? Is that something else that you need us to help?
For sure. I think one of the things that we are all, one of the reflections that we have heard from some of our program participants is ensuring not only that we have enough employers to take our youth, but also ensuring that there's the diversity of employment opportunities that are things that relate and connect and engage with a lot of our youth. And so we are always looking for assistance and support with that as well.
So I remember one year when I was looking into this with Partner for Work, there was, like, if you were an employer, you would, do you have to pay into, to pay to participate with the program? And that was sort of a, and you know, it took me a little by surprise because I had recommended some folks and then they came and they were like?
Sure.
I didn't realize, yeah.
So in the past, to participate in the corporate component of the Learn and Earn Program, employers did have to pay and that was to, one, be able to compensate the older youth who are playing, like actually working at a higher rate. And then also understanding that because they are a bit older, they have a different level of needs. And I think that corporate buy-in also supplement some of the program costs for the younger youth to continue to participate. This time around, there is still a call to have employers participate, but with the new tiered system, the highest level is advancement. So if you guys go to like the, the last page of the sheet that I passed around, really, we're focusing on partnerships with trade unions, vocational schools and other preparatory programs and apprenticeship application support. So that way, the youth who are at different jobs are doing what it is that they actually want to do as opposed to something that they don't really have as much interest in. And that was something that we saw with different employers. They would have different youth come who may not have felt as connected to the work that they were doing. So in turn, their experience wasn't as, you know, rewarding as they might have initially wanted at the beginning.
So we've made changes with that new tiered system to address some of those challenges in the past.
Okay, and then also just, and again, this is just sort of curiosity, but you know, in terms of our small businesses, because I know, I mean, one thing that came up, the, I don't remember if it was last, last year or the year before, but I know that there were a number of auto body shops in my area who really, they always have help wanted signs out. And I spoke to a, a few of them and they said like, you know, the people who are coming anyway don't have experience, you know what I mean? The people who are coming to apply don't have experience. So it wasn't, it didn't, you know, they didn't see that as a, as a barrier. Like if you don't have experience, like will come. So I don't know if there's any effort to kind of reach out to those smaller organizations or, at any rate, I was just.
I think this time around, with the, with the tiers being far more centered on like this workforce development component, I think it would make it a lot easier for said auto body shop to serve as a work site as opposed to it being a little bit more limited in the past. And also, I think sometimes when people don't get to serve as a work site, it's because there's not a provider that's able to have some sort of connection point to them to then send the youth to have placement there. But if you can, like, we can connect offline as well. And to see if maybe they might have interest. And we, and myself and Caldwell, who is our youth coordinator, can really get connected to the, the provider, then to the work site and then to the actual youth to, to serve there for the summer.
Yeah, if you have any flyers or whatever that we could go around to the smaller, you know, businesses, sort of specialize, you know, smaller businesses like that, then that'd be great.
And I know that they are in the final phase of wrapping up some of the marketing and recruitment stuff. So as soon as we get them, I'll be sure to bring them over to all of you.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any further, oh, we have Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. I wanted to thank you all, I think I heard you say that you sent over a report, but I'm not finding it in my email. If you could resend it to my office, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
Just, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. I, I was talking through some policymakers about the threats to our, not just our city treasury, but to our community and to our constituents, the threat of federal funding cuts. Can you remind me if you receive federal funds and what funds?
So the city does not receive federal funds to support this work. Partner for Work does receive federal dollars that they allocate to a number of their programs, including to support Learn and Earn. The amount that the city and the county give to Learn and Earn does not cover the full cost of the program. Partner for Work does contribute funding and, and we work to fundraise additional resources as well. So they do, and Partner for Work, we have been in conversations with them, Councilwoman, in a number of areas in our workforce capacity about federal funding. And as of right now, they have not expressed any concerns to us related to the funding, those federal funding sources that would supplement and support Learn and Earn.
Thank you, but my question is, what are those federal sources?
I believe they're WEOWA dollars. I believe they are WEOWA dollars.
Can you explain what that is?
Sure, yes. Let me Google the acronym for, the acronym for it, Councilwoman.
Exactly, like what, so usually federal funding comes through one of the federal departments.
Sure.
Is it Department of Labor?
Yes.
Gotcha.
It's the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. As I mentioned, this is funding that supports not just Learn and Earn, it supports a number of the work programs that Partner for Work manages. And of course, comes with certain eligibility criteria, income, all of those sorts of, of things.
What I'm trying to understand here is, I think you're asking us here for 1.5 million? Is that my mistake? I'm having a hard time funding or pulling up the legislation details, I apologize.
Sure, so through a partnership and collaboration with the county that thank you all for having previously approved, we now no longer have to send 1.5 million. We only have to send one, and I say only, but follow me here for a second, 1.2 million to the county. And then they are able to match fund that to provide the additional 300,000 to provide the city's 1.5 million contribution. They also provide a 1.5 million contribution. Partner for Work provides a contribution. And then we collectively do some additional private and philanthropic fundraising to support this program.
And is the report that you're going to send to my office have those dollar amounts in, you know, more detail?
The report does not. The report outlines things like how many youth are placed from each district, who, what are the demographics of some of those youth? I'm looking at the table of contents here. It is forty pages, so it is.
Work site experience.
Work site experience by geography, participant data, youth application and participation. So there are a number of things in there, but we can certainly ensure that you get information about the budgetary breakdown.
So this agreement doesn't speak to the funds. Where is the funds approved? I finally pulled up the text file.
Sure.
And this one just says that you are allowed to enter into the intergovernmental cooperation agreement and that it shall be approved by the city solicitor. It also says the city shall contribute funds by separate agreement. It also says, I just want to highlight for members in the public, section four of the agreement in front of us says that the final language shall include, the cooperation agreement shall require an advisory committee to monitor Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program each year. And the advisory committee will include a representative from city council and a representative from the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service.
Sure.
So I just wanted to point out, that's the bill in front of us.
Correct, and so think about it this way. You all have already previously, and thank you for that, authorized the partnership and collaboration with Allegheny County. That is how the money will move. It is budgeted in HR's budget every year, the, now 1.2 million. It moves from us to the county. The county then adds $300,000 worth of match funds, adds their contribution and will pay to Partner for Work. This agreement, though, is to govern the operation of the program. So what are the requirements of the program? How do we determine eligibility, application process, focus areas? The programmatic structure that you see here of tier one, tier two, tier three. That is what this agreement is specific to. It's separate, related to how the funding operates. Now, previously, it did not function that way, but we're able to save $300,000 to the city by using this model and collaborating with the county.
So that's 1.5 from the city, 300,000 from the county. You said add, you know, matched by or Partner for Work puts in its money? No dollar amount was mentioned?
Just one quick correction there, Councilwoman. The city contributes 1.2 million to the county.
You said that, you said that, absolutely. So the total is 1.5, but there was no, I guess it, three dollars from Partners for Work?
The county, I've just given you the full context. The county then also gives 1.5 million. And I don't have the number in front of me of Partner for Work's contribution.
This is the total number.
Yes, but that doesn't come, the rest doesn't come from our work. I can get you the budgetary contribution from Partner for Work. I don't have that in front of me right now, Councilwoman, but I'm, I'm happy to provide that to anybody who's interested in what Partner for Work's contribution is to the Learn and Earn Program. It is less than what the city and the county are providing. I do recall that, I just don't have the exact number in front of me.
So are you saying that the county, because actually you said it differently here. You said the county put in 300,000, but then you said the county also puts in 1.5?
Yes, that's why I wanted to make it clear. So we send 1.2 million to the county. They provide $300,000 worth of match. They also put in 1.5 million. So essentially, the city's contribution is 1.5, the county's contribution is 1.5. We only have to send 1.2, though, to get the 1.5 for our contribution. And then Partner for Work also puts in additional contribution and we do additional private fundraising collectively between Partner for Work, the county and the city to support this program. So it is a program that is well in excess of $3 million to operate the program.
That was what I was getting to.
Sure, sure.
Thank you for getting right to it.
Sure, you're welcome.
So it's in excess of 3 million and that is just for city residents, not for the county portion?
That is city and county together. So 1.2 from the city goes to the county, they add 300,000.
I, I understand.
Sure.
Who is it serving, Felicity?
The City of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County.
Okay, so I'm not concerned, I don't want to know what the total budget is then.
Okay.
My question is, how many of the dollars are going to city residents? Because I'm coming up from the numbers that you recited, thank you, for the residents per city council district. Seems like about, I think about 700 kids were served. You know, we kind of read them off really fast. It seemed like an average of about eighty or so kids per district. And the outliers could be Councilwoman Lovell's district, District Six, that's something like 172 kids. And then District Seven was something like only 28 kids. But all the other districts seem to be around 70 or 80 kids.
Sure. So Councilwoman, our funds go towards supporting city participants. The city has a much higher number of participants. I believe for this upcoming year, it is around 800 City of Pittsburgh participants to the counties, maybe 300, if I'm recalling that correctly. I'll have to go back and look. But the bulk of the program is City of Pittsburgh and our funds are going towards City of Pittsburgh kids' participation in the program.
Right, so that's definitely kind of like just, as you were.
Councilwoman, we lost you.
I apologize, I'm sorry, I'm kind of breaking up.
Sure.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Sure.
This was the conversation when we switched from it being an internal program.
Yes.
Right, this program has to be run entirely by city employees.
Correct.
And so we knew where every dollar was going. And so since switching over to Partners for Work, I think it's really important that we continue to provide transparency. And so it's really important that we see those reports. From the way you're framing it here, it sounds like not only is the 1.5, 1.2 million from the city plus the 300,000 from the county going to serve city residents. But if it's true that there's far more participation by city residents, it sounds like then we're additionally supported by the county's match as well.
Sure, yeah.
And if that's so, if that's so, then I think it's important for us to know that and for our constituents to know that too. So I don't, I think we've kind of clarified as much as we can now and I look forward to seeing the report and I'm supportive today, thank you. I don't have any more questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and thank you, Councilwoman Gross. I just wanted to add one point, that Councilwoman Lovell is the city council representative, has been, on that Learn and Earn Advisory Committee. Director Paula Kellerman is our HR, although she sometimes delegates that to a member of our Pittsburgh Partnership. And then I have been. And then I have been the other representative on the advisory committee on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Uh, yeah, Council President, yes.
Just one second and not to belabor any of this. But I do think it's important to bring up at least one of the changes that have been made to the program, which is priority placement.
Absolutely.
Which is a goal to really get to the most vulnerable populations within our city. So you could, thirty seconds, just sort of explain the priority placement for the benefit of members.
This was something that was very important to us. As Alexis mentioned, the application process is long. There's a number of reasons about why the application has to be long. Some of it is the funding sources and the information we have to collect to ensure compliance based on the funding sources. And we know that that can be a barrier to participation. It is a first come, first served program. It has been historically. So if you don't complete your application in a certain time, or you take longer to complete your application, or you don't complete it at all, you can't get into the pipeline to be set up for the limited number of opportunities that exist. And so it was very important to us that we restructure that and so that it wasn't just a first come, first served, but that we identified, some of whom you will see listed here, and Alexis, if you want to build on that, you can, are our target demographics who would be placed first while we hold other applications. Assuming that we don't fill all of the spots, we would ensure that, you know, the pool of applicants are placed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that was a critical change to us, to the administration.
That was it for me.
Thank you, thank you. I'll just say for my part, this whole, and I know this is not the first time we've done this, but it came up a lot today, this whole notion that we are partnering with the city to, for a local match, to leverage funds to then fill that three hundred thousand dollars from the, that comes from the state, is really great. And we should continue to do that in other programs as well. And I hope that that can, you know, continue to be a really, it's just good government. It saves us money. And I hope that we can grow that amount that we can leverage through that whole system. To Councilwoman Gross's question, like, more specifically on that, is any of that state funding at risk here or anywhere else where we're looking to do that? Through the, you know, I know a lot of federal funds flow through the state and then back down to us. Could that be at risk because of current federal policies?
So I don't want to speak on that authoritatively. I would say that would be a great question for our Chief Financial Officer, Patrick Cornell, who has been involved in the structure of how the actual dollars flow and that relationship between the city and the county.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I apologize, but...
No, no, no. Good, good, good person to ask, for sure. Okay, I have no further questions. Just wanted to point out that great partnership and it should continue in the future. Anything further from members? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fifteen thirty, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Bill seven forty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Aubrey for services relating to non-congregate shelter services related to the Home ARP program, total not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to hold six weeks.
Oh, second.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a six-week hold for Bill seven forty-nine, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Bill will be held for six weeks. New Papers fifteen forty-three.
Bill fifteen forty-three, ordinance accepting five new street names. Coalseam Street, Darby Street, Lucas Court, Lucas Street, and Pittwell Street in the Fifth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street names were approved by CPAC in January two thousand and twenty-five. The names listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code, Title IV, Public Places and Property, Chapter four twenty, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Only just to note that these are five new streets that are going to be part of the new Choice Redevelopment Program in the Middle Hill District. So that's pretty exciting.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fifteen forty-three, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. Bill fifteen forty-four.
Bill fifteen forty-four, ordinance accepting a new street name, Riley Street, in the Sixteenth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in January two thousand and twenty-five. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code, Title IV, Public Places and Property, Chapter four twenty, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Second. Discussion, Councilman Wilson.
The only thing I want to say is that I appreciate how this name, how this naming of the street came to be because since it's the same name and spelling of my daughter, then she's going to be pretty excited to go check it out. So thank you to whoever's involved with this.
But not named after her.
I don't think so. Never caught us.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fifteen forty-four, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. That concludes our standing committee's agenda, our formal agenda. We do have some meeting announcements. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, March eleventh, and standing committees meeting on Wednesday, March twelfth, both at ten AM. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight. Is there anything from members? Councilmember Warwick?
Yes, thank you. I would like to call for a post-agenda on PWSA's cancellation of a number of flood mitigation projects throughout the city.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The post-agenda on that topic will be scheduled. Anything else from members? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.